Good evening. The meeting of the Board of Education is now called to order at 6:30 PM on July 29th. The Secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying here.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kempton?
Here.
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. And now if you will please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we move into public and staff comments, anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when that agenda item they want to address is being discussed. As you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium, please provide us with your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satinon, and he will share those items with the Board of Education at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks are to be limited to three minutes into one appearance, thus allowing a maximum number of participants in the allotted time to speak. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Uh, Sedalia School District Foundation? You don't see anybody? NEA? SCEA? Okay. Enjoy summer. Uh, Ms. Brownfield, the Seal of Bilinguacy?
Good evening. We just want to take a quick second to recognize our students that achieved a Seal of Bilinguacy this year, so we are very fortunate to offer that opportunity for our students to reach proficiency in more than one language. This year we had 11, it might be up to 12 now from our last count. We had one last minute, and so that's an increase of seven from the previous year. So Mrs. Eppenauer is here to share a little bit more with you and who those students are.
Good evening. So the Seal of Bilinguacy is offered by the state of Missouri through Sedalia School District, and it is what it sounds like. It's a seal that goes on their diploma, and it certifies that these kids are bilingual or in some cases multilingual. It does a lot of work in order to achieve the Seal of Bilinguacy. It takes years of study. They have to have a minimum test scores in both English and a second language, and sometimes more than than that. They have to test in four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and pass in all four of those domains. And in addition to that, there's 50 hours of tutoring or community service that's language-related. And so these kids have really worked hard, and we are really, really proud of them. This year, we had the following who received the Seal of Bilinguacy. Jihad Ibrahim, Paula Rojas Murillo, and Paula's here with me. Thank you, Paula, for coming tonight. Jocelyn Arista, Indiana Ellison, Cecia Argueta, Jocelyn Santiago, Christina Dimitriak, Francisco Gonzalez Talavera, Addison Lyles, Jethlyn Glaster, and Janet Martinez Dimas. So thank you guys very much for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and congratulations. Ms. Stark? Is Ms. Stark or Mr. Curry?
Stark is in Las Vegas presenting at a national conference, so.
That's right. Yeah, so you'll take the MSBA certification?
I will.
Okay.
Just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize Security Officer Anthony Cressy at Parkview, who completed his Missouri School Board Association certification for school safety specialist through the Center for Education Safety, which is an MSBA platform. So he went down to Branson in mid-June and completed a three-day course down there and has that on his resume now as a member of our security team. So appreciate him and his continued professional development.
Congratulations to him, too. Great. Thank you. Okay, I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda. And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.8? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And 4.9 is consent agenda item 4.9, payment of bills with Mr. Kempton abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
4.10, payment of bills with Ms. Moon abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is decisions under unfinished business. Ms. Brownfield?
So brought actively learned to you at the last meeting. This is designed to help support our social studies standards. They've been working through open source material and have found that this more accurately aligns and will be a little bit more supportive and vetted in a way.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Brownfield on this? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All not in favor say nay. And that is approved. Thank you. And Ms. Brownfield, the Missouri history curriculum?
So just asking for your approval on the new alignment with the standards for the Missouri history curriculum, and you are seeing kind of our first course that we're bringing to you with our full proficiency skills completed.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brownfield?
Do you expect those curriculum, uh, state standards to change? We have a former employee there. Do you expect those to change anytime soon?
We, we do not. I mean, the, you know, state and the directors at DESI could propose some changes, but we don't see any changes like that in the foreseeable future.
And you'll, you actually will be using a lot of the materials that he's gathered?
Correct.
Okay, and you'll be fully prepared to explain to people what the Honeymore was?
Yes. We will make sure that the Honeymore is explained. Yes.
All right, thank you. All moves approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that is approved. Thank you. Dr. Fraley, the CEP application results?
Yeah, let me get to that. Yes, last month, the board approved for the district to apply for the community eligibility program, which would have paid for free lunch and breakfast for all students because under our district information, we technically would qualify for that. After we did apply for that, the numbers that we received back from the state of Missouri did not show favorable for the district. In addition to that, SNAP benefits eligibility is under scrutiny and questioned at the federal level, as well as USA, USDA funding. So I don't think it's prudent for the district at this time to continue with that. We need to sit back a year and wait and see what happens with the federal government and Department of Education before moving forward to take that risk.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley?
Do we not commit to CEP eligibility for the 2025-26 school year?
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. That is approved. Thank you. And items for decision, Ms. Nolan with a donation from Nucor?
Yes, good evening. We are just asking for approval from the board to accept a $500 donation from Nucor for the purchase of supplies for enrichment activities for career education classes. From my understanding, this is something they would like to continue, a donation for future years to come as well. They've been such a good partner to our junior high. They come and serve as guest speakers at least twice a year, and so we are just very fortunate that they would like to donate to this program, these classes.
Very nice. Are there any questions for Ms. Nolan? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the Nucor donation of $500 to Smith Cotton Junior High for career education supplies as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And thank you to Nucor. Next is Mr. Pyle with the special education program evaluation. You valve?
Yes. Happy to report on special education tonight. Our Board of Education had this in the packet, but for any audience members, I'll touch on a few things right quick to kind of update them. Our total population from the December 1 count is when they look at special education across the board was 858. That is actually three less students as compared to the year prior. We had a jump of 21 at the early childhood level and about that same reduced at the K-12 level, so we're even back out again, really, very close to where we were the year before. So 14% is our special education population rate across our district as far as the students that are in. The, the program goals, I'm happy with our team, you know, very thankful for the team that we have and the experience level that we have from our special education leadership team, from our coordinators down to other leaders, Mr. Hun Saker, Mrs. Simons, who helped kind of lead our teams to our teachers and our paraprofessionals. So all important. Just touch on the few goals that we want to give our students an opportunity to test. Our district does a great job compared to the state. We look to be at 95% or above for those kids that have that opportunity to test, no matter what they qualify for special education for. And in the packet, we pointed out that we had scores above the state in math and in English, language arts, as far as the state testing rates. So just very thankful for the team. The experience level of our coordinators helps guide our teacher teams across the district, and many of those folks have been in the, been on the team for a while, so I believe that helps us very much. Focusing on safe crisis management again this year with a little bit more in-depth training on that piece, and thankful for the team.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the special education program evaluation as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the motion is approved. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pyle, do you have the gifted program evaluation to you?
Yes. Do want to, same way as special education, I know you as, as a board have had an opportunity to look through it, but I'll point out some numbers and things of our program for anybody listening in tonight. So the numbers that are on our gifted are 107 for this past school year. The highest point we've had in the last five years was prior to the pandemic at 145. The lowest we've had was 99. Now we're at 107, so we're kind of trending back and still focusing on making sure our counselor team, which is very involved in helping us with the pre, I guess, the pre-qualification standards to finally make it into gifted are helping our team. So I want to compliment Mrs. Hofstetter, one of our counselors, and Mrs. Gilmore for the help that they provided to our team last year. So our counselors are always involved in the process, but those two really helped drill down and make sure we're, we're looking at everything we can to, to find those that maybe have the opportunity to test, to go to the IQ testing level. And with those numbers that I pointed out, we're at 2.2% across the, across our district, and that's still comparable to what DESI expects for students that actually qualify for gifted. So Mrs. Todd's a certified teacher. She's been with us for many years in that program. The students that qualify love, love that program and thankful we are able to keep her, Mr. Fry. I want to compliment him and thank him for working through, finding a way with all that's going on in that building to make sure she stays put, so she will still have a home at the middle school next year.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the gifted program evaluation as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that is approved. Uh, Mr. Curry, the health services program evaluation?
Yes, I'm tackling this this evening for our nurse health coordinator. Ms. Dana Curry is out of town, but you can see the list of accompanying reports that are produced through her department and submitted to DESI for her annual end of the year reporting, and then we bring it to the Board of Education for approval. Without diving into each of these, I would just kind of take a moment to commend the department as a whole and the staff that we have within it. If you noticed on one of those reports, it indicates that there's over 40,000 encounters that they document, and the majority of those are student encounters, with just over 1,000 being staff that they see over the course of the school year. So that's, you know, on a daily basis, that's emergencies, that's the little playground incidents, but every time that a student or a staff member comes through the, the health office, it's documented, and then those go into the appropriate report that we keep tabs of and then ultimately submit to the Department of Senior or Health Services. So again, just to take a, a second to commend them on, on what they do and the, the, what they provide to our students and our staff, but a large portion to our students.
Yes.
So if, happy, happy to try and answer any questions that you might have, but I just want to take that opportunity to say thank you for what they do.
Any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the health services program evaluation as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Mr. Curry, the part-time food service position?
We've, similar to the custodial request that we waited on, we waited on food service and seeing especially how CEP was going to play out when we got the final numbers from DESI, but looking forward to this coming school year with the transition of fourth grade over to the middle school and being able to staff our kitchens appropriately, we're still going to be in need of a part-time food service position. If we, if everything would have worked out with CEP, we wouldn't have had a need to have actual cashiers, so we could have utilized those, that staff in a little bit different manner, but we're still able to move some people around and accommodate and, and staff appropriately, but we still need a part-time position to make sure that we are covered the way that we need to be to service the students and staff appropriately. So that's what I bring to you this evening is I hope that you would approve the addition of a part-time food service personnel. And again, you can see the average annual salary or been, or cost to the district is, you know, around 15,500, $15,500, depending on any prior experience that might need to be accounted for.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the addition of a part-time food service position for the 25-26 school year as presented.
So moved.
And a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that is approved. Thank you. Dr. Fraley, tax rate hearing?
Yes, wanted to, uh, know that's, we've already approved a date for that and a time, but I, to make this as, as public as possible, I want to recommend to set a special meeting for the 25-26 tax rate hearing for the next school year on August 25th, 2025, at 6:15 PM, prior to the regular scheduled board meeting.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? Do I hear a motion to set the tax rate hearing date as presented? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that is approved. Thank you. And Dr. Fraley, the tuition rate?
Yeah, you have for you tuition for this upcoming school year, 25-26, has been calculated at $11,954.38 using the DESI tuition calculation tool. Also included Missouri revised statutes in the memo for reference. It is a pretty cut and dry Excel spreadsheet that I have to fill in our current, our previous year expenditures and revenues, and then it gives us the, the cost per student.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 tuition rate at $11,954.38 as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that is approved. Next is discussion, the SMS Tiger Tots proposal. Was there someone here from JR OTC leadership that wanted to speak, or? Oh, and Mr. Fry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm the Estee, Emily Fuji. And I'm the battalion commander, Austin Birino.
So there may be some further questions from board members concerning the program that could potentially be addressed at this time?
Yeah, I, um, I don't know that I have any questions, but as, and I think this is an excellent program. I think it's great when we get our students engaged, but I am really, and I have talked with Mr. Fry about it and Sergeant Sapanich, and as I have thought about it, I am really questioning the wisdom of putting it into place this coming school year. And my concerns are this, for the first time, we're going to be taking in double the amount of students that we have at the middle school. Both grades have no prior experience there, and while we have, of course, additional staff, I think this is going to be an experience for several of our parents. And quite frankly, I think perhaps we're just kind of trying to push too much too soon right in there. I would like to see us get the, the both grades in there and see how that works out and processes through the year before we start adding a bunch of extra after-school activities. I think there's probably going to be some confusion with buses and stuff, particularly at the beginning of the year, getting all these students home, and parents are going to have to deal with different changing times. Every one of these students is dealing with a different time schedule than they had been on previously. Their school day starts 40 minutes earlier, and they're getting out a little bit earlier, and then there's a longer period if they have to stay after. I just think that there's going to be a lot of kind of adjusting schedules and working around that for a lot of parents, and the disaster, not disaster, sorry, the, the mistakes and errors have the potential to double, and so I would like to see us wait until next year to look at this program again.
Any other board members want to sound off? Mr. Fry, if you want to jump in and?
Mr. Fry, I have a question. Have, I assume you've had interest from families or kids about this program?
Yes, we have. So we had, and I had explained this to, to Ms. Schrader, too, we had, towards the end of the school year, we had some students that took a field trip with, and went to, to visit the JR OTC group and actually participated. And just the, the interest that they sparked, the conversations then that they had with their parents, made us feel like that, and I have Miss Sapanich, by the way, too, in my building. She teaches science for me at the middle school, and so she, her team was part of that, and she helped kind of arrange that with Sergeant Sapanich. And so seeing that interest, and I've been at the middle school for several years as a teacher, and one of the things that I've always felt like it would be nice to have more after-school activities for those students, and I know that transportation is an issue. We've had that, we've had, we've ran into that a little bit when it comes to our robotics program, but we've been able to, we've been able to kind of maneuver that and manage that. So that was what really kind of sparked, the students were talking about it, they came back to school excited about it. And then, of course, you know, Miss Sapanich came to me and said, wow, this would be something. And as we've, as we moved forward to becoming a Purple Star district, that was just another aspect we felt like we could maybe add, but understand some of the concerns as well. So, but that was where the interest was sparked.
Can you give me an idea of the number of kids that expressed interest?
I would say, I mean, there was 90 kids that ended up going and being a part of it. I would say the majority of them, I mean, they got to participate in a lot of the drills and things like that, and they could probably talk to more exactly what they did, but that was the piece that they were most interested in.
And those would be split between fourth and fifth grade?
The thought process at this time was primarily fifth grade.
Thank you.
Do you know of any other districts that have implemented a JR OTC-style program like this in grade levels like we are expecting?
So we originally got our idea from Leavenworth up in Kansas City. They do it with a much younger program, but they've had a bunch of successful rates. The kids get super interested in it. It's just, it was a great leadership program that we decided to go down, look at, and try to implement here for our kids.
Great.
And I, I really appreciate Barbara's concerns and, and bringing those to light. I'm one that, I think I'm, and I'm impressed with this because it's going to be student-led. Is that what I'm understanding by the paper in our? And I really like that, when the high school students get to go in and work with the younger ones, it also gives the families an introduction of what's to come, if they're students, what's to come at the higher levels. I also am one that until you try something, you don't know, and so I'm, at this point, you know, pretty much in favor of it, just because we've never tried it. I would like to see how it went, and, you know, maybe after a couple of years, it, it, it's not a good fit. It, it's not working. We can always pull back, but to be able to say we tried it, I think, you know, that's, it's worthy of that, so that's just my thoughts on it.
Excuse me, if I can interrupt here. While I love the fact that it's student-led, Sergeant Sapanich, are you back there? Do you mind coming up so, because I do not want to, we talked quite a bit of time, and I certainly don't want to misquote you or misinterpret the things that were said. Thank you so, and, and by the way, to both Sergeant Sapanich and Mr. Fry, they spent a great deal of amount, a great deal of time with me and answered a lot of questions. I'm sure they thought some of them were frivolous, but I did appreciate this. So I do want to go into that student-led factor because that for me, as I'm sure you were aware from the phone conversation, was a determining problem. So jump right in and correct me. In order to be over at the middle school by 3 o'clock, these students will have to leave Smith Cotton before 7th period. Okay? And they are not in JR OTC 7th period, so they will be leaving other classes like English, math, science, I don't know what all they're in that period, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be myriad of other classes.
And so they would be excused from other academics to do this, and I, did we say maybe once every two weeks?
So the way, the way we're looking at it right now, we would shoot for 50 kids, which would make five teams of 10 kids each, based on the number of leaders that we have in drill and or Raiders. The goal is to have at least three leaders per team. That first day, they'll all go down, they'll meet the kids. After that, they'll rotate, so one of those three leaders per team will be down there. If it's two days a week, it'll be every other week, they will miss one 7th hour, so two days a month, they'll miss their 7th hour class. I understand they will miss classes, but it will not be that, that much. It won't be every day.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will be quite frank, I do have concerns about, when we talk about the importance of in-class attendance and being in class, I have concerns about, there are going to be other times they miss, and for one thing, I have concerns about the, the learning and what happens, but I also have concerns about how that affects the teacher in the classroom, who is constantly adjusting for students who are going to be gone, you know?
Will the leaders be sophomores, juniors, seniors? What age range are we looking at?
Generally speaking, it would be juniors and seniors. There may be one or two sophomores. We have some, some really high-speed sophomores that would really benefit from being down there with the kids. But it would be a case by case. We're not going to take anybody struggling in their classes. They don't have to meet academic standards in order to be able to go down there.
So there would still be expectations for those high school students as well as, like for the fifth graders, there's criteria that they have to meet in order?
for the fifth graders, there's criteria that they have to meet in order to be a part of the program. The high school students would also have to be?
Grades play a part in everything we do, ma'am. We wouldn't send anybody down that show.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fry, how many fifth graders do we have, or do we anticipate to have next year in your building?
Currently, as I look at numbers, we're pushing close to 370 or so, roughly.
And the target is to get 50 of those kids in this program? Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions, any other questions, comments?
Sorry, Mr. Fry, one, because you compared it to the robotics team. How many students did you have involved in that?
In the robotics team, we had, so we, we did the robotics team, we did two different sessions. We did one first semester and one second semester, which we're kind of looking at that a little differently, too, because what we find is, is that in order for them to truly compete, competition season doesn't allow for one group to build their robots soon enough, because most of the competitions are done the second part of the year. But we had roughly 50 kids that participated in the robotics program as well. They also had criteria that they had to meet, too. So, and basically, everything that you see there for JROTC was the same as robotics. We did have them, they had to fill out application, actually get teacher recommendations to be a part of robotics as well.
Okay. Any other, anyone else want to comment before we move on? Because this will be, tonight, it's just discussion. We will bring this back for a vote, I'm guessing, next month in August to finalize it.
What are some of the skills that the fifth graders will learn by being part of this group?
So they would gain an opportunity to be in a leadership position, and they would gain some knowledge on how to run a team, be a part of a team, team player. They'll be a learner, and the, I know that down at the fifth grade, they have their, like, tiger stripes, so they would fit all of those, and yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's really big for leadership, because I know a lot of kids, they get nervous being put in positions that they've never been in before. They don't know how to operate and run with other kids they don't meet, they don't know. So it's just a really big opportunity for them to expand and learn and just grow all and all.
Where would their competitions be?
Oh, at the school.
The competition in December that they attend?
I guess.
That would be at the school?
Yes.
Anyone else, any other questions or comments? We appreciate you all being here tonight to answer our questions, and thank you so much. Next on the agenda is items under information, and I think this all pertains to MSBA's Fall Regional Conference that will be held Wednesday, September 3, in Warrensburg. Anyone that knows their calendar allows to attend that, please let Lisa know, and she'll get our registration done with MSBA. And then also the annual conference, MSBA Annual Conference will be in October in Kansas City, and I believe Lisa's told me she's already reserved our hotel rooms for Thursday and Friday night. There's a few of us that have meetings early Thursday morning, so she's added Wednesday night for us. If you know those dates aren't going to work for you, let Lisa know as soon as possible, and she will cancel the reservations, and then also get whoever can attend registered with MSBA. Okay? Thank you. And that looks like it completes our agenda for tonight, so if I can have a motion to adjourn to closed executive session?
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting, and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sudea School District Number 200, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section 610.021, RSMO Subsection 1, Legal Actions 2, Purchase or Sale of Real Estate 3, Hiring, Firing, Disciplining or Promoting 13, Personnel Records 14, Records Which Are Protected 18, Public Safety or Law Enforcement, and 19, Security System and Structural Plans by Law of the Missouri Statutes. Will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on July 29, 2025, at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Roqal vote, please.
Dr. Barth Fagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner? Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kempton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great week.